October 28th, 2025. Moment of silence with Amanda Pickett and Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Enfield High School community suffered a student loss last week. I ask that we take a moment to reflect upon this loss and what it can teach us about the difficulties our students face in school and in their life. I hope for peace and healing for the family and anybody impacted by this loss. I also ask that we take a moment of silence for Jamaica. Our community is home to many families connected to the motherland. Let us continue to care for one another, near and far. And now for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, so in the unlikely event of a fire, you can exit out the rear doors of the council chambers, out to the parking lot, or you can exit out the side doors of the chambers, down the stairs and out to the parking lot. Leslie, can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Pickett?
Here.
Mrs. Akri?
Here.
Dr. Callenin?
Here.
Mrs. Cushman?
Here.
Mr. Gauss?
Here.
Mr. Kober?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Chairwoman Riley?
Here.
All right, board guest, Michelle Manethan, state assessment results.
We ready?
Go ahead, Michelle.
Okay, sorry. I didn't know if I was ready for something. Okay, I'm here to talk about the state assessment scores. It says 24-25, but as you'll see, there's comparatively years in there as well. So, the first item would be to talk about our goals for 25-26. And our district-wide goals in math in ELA are for students K-12 to show growth and mastery of skills and understanding of standards in math in ELA, as shown by their performance from the fall assessments. Those are internal to the spring assessments. Here are those assessments that we use for data monitoring. We have the iReady Math Diagnostic from K-8. We have the Easy CBM Reading Diagnostic from K-8. That is part of the state's, one of the state's required universal screens for K-3 literacy. We use it for K-8. We also have our inter-reading end-of-module assessments in reading, K-5. You'll remember inter-reading is our new reading program. We're in year two of K-5. iReady, MyPath, is part, is related to the Ready Math Diagnostic and the Ready Math Curriculum. And it is a personalized learning, I think we've talked about this in years in the past, where it, it looks at the student's performance on the diagnostic and assigns them lessons and areas where they are, they need some skill strengthening, and does it in a certain order that helps them build up. If students are at grade level, it takes them above. So, it's personalized in all ways. And at 6 through 12, we have district-created common English assessments and common math assessments, both at the high school and the middle school, with common rubrics and common courses. So, for monitoring progress, there's different ways that we do this. The academic directors, teachers, and building administration, they meet regularly. Sometimes it's data meetings during PL, during faculty meetings. It just depends, but they're, they're regularly talking about data and looking at next steps and where intervention should be taking place. We have student achievement meetings at the elementary level, principals K-2 and then 3-5 will come to, in the fall, winter, and spring, they come to central office. They, the primary principals did so today. They meet with Superintendent Macchio, Deputy Superintendent Longy, Mr. Flynn, and Mr. Ponti, and myself. And we look at the, the data. Right now, we just were looking at beginning of the year data. And next steps were, what our intervention tiers look like, how many kiddos are falling into each group, that type of conversation. And we talk about what we, what we can do next. The secondary principals meet with me monthly. And for these meetings, I invite a different director, depending on the timing, to come and discuss their department data. The November meeting will be with Mr. Ponti, looking at science and math, 612. The assessment scores we're going to talk about are smarter balanced, both ELA and math, grades 3 through 8. SAT School Day, both evidence-based reading and writing and math for grade 11. And the Next Generation Science Standards, that takes place in 5A and 11. The graphs show comparison between EPS and the state. Those are going to be trend data for four years, 2021, 22, through last year. And then cohort comparisons where we can, because the Next Generation Science SAT, those don't cohort, you can't, it's different groups of kiddos. So, for this, first of all, the numbers are representing the percentage of students reading proficient, meeting proficiency or above on the assessment. Yellow is the state and blue is us. So, you'll see that we have made a little progress in closing the gap for ELA grade 3. I'm going to kind of just, if I'm going too fast, let me know. ELA grade 4, if you look for 21-22, to where we ended up the last two years, the gap is definitely lesser, gone. ELA grade 5, same thing. ELA grade 6, we are still below the state, but last, we, we made some good progress last year, especially, we really did catch up. ELA grade 7, again, you could see compared to 21-22, the later scores are showing some growth. And ELA grade 8. I'm going to switch to math, obviously. Okay, math grade 3. We started, we started in 21-22, we got, the gap got a little bit bigger, but then we closed, we went back, we're closer to where we were in 21-22. Math grade 4, the past couple of years, has gotten right up there. Math grade 5, we had closed the gap, but last year it opened up a little bit. I will say, if we remember correctly, those grade 5 classes were kind of high last year, so that might have a little tiny bit to do with it. Grade 6 math, if you look at where we were in 21-22 and where we were in 24-25, we have made a little bit of progress in our grade 6 math. Grade 7, same, probably about the same amount. And grade 8, we actually made more progress, but we're still below the state. Grade 11, evidence-based reading and writing. These have, we've actually, sorry, I got to catch up to my slide. We've actually made really good gains there. We're, we're pretty much right, we're, we've been consistent with them the past couple of years. Math, obviously math is lower for the state as well as for Enfield, but we, we did manage to make more growth than, in Enfield, at grade 11. NGSS grade 5, we're pretty right on par where everybody else seems to be, especially the last two years, for grade 5.
Can you just say what NGSS is?
Oh, sorry. Next Generation Science Standards Assessment. Thank you, Amanda. Grade 8, we have seen, if you look at our number of where we were just Enfield in 21-22 and where we were last year, that's, that we made double-digit gains there. And grade 11, we continue to outpace the state in the grade 11 science assessment. The cohort comparisons, this, so now the blue, it represents the year of 23-24, and the yellow represents the year of 24-25. And so, the fir, this is our kiddos from grade 3 to grade 4, grade 4 to grade 5, and grade 5 to grade 6 in ELA. So, you know, the grade 3 to grade 4 last year made, made a, made some good growth. Grade 4 to grade 5 made growth as well, little bit of a dip, grade 5 to grade 6, but they're still pretty close. Math, again, we saw grade 3 to grade 4 make some, some good growth last year. We dipped a little bit, grade 4 to grade 5, but if you remember when I showed the ELA grade 5 slide, we kind of talked about a factor that might have impacted that a bit. And grade 5 to grade 6, there was a little bit of a dip as well. There was a transition of grade 6, and, you know, that, we talked a little bit at Curriculum Committee about that, how that might have an impact on some of the students. And then the only other cohort comparisons we can do are grade 6 to grade 7 in ELA, which pretty much stayed the same, and grade 7 to grade 8, which dropped a little bit. And then in math, for those two grades, again, grade 6 to grade 7 went up a little bit, grade 7 to grade 8 dropped, dropped, dropped some as well, so. What we have in place for this year, we talked about the K-8 Easy CBM Diagnostic, it's given fall, winter, spring. That data informs our Tier 2 instruction and our Tier 3 instruction, which is small group. It's, teachers use the data from the universal screen to identify the skills that are in need and assign progress monitoring. This is how intervention groups are formed. Grade 3 through 5, for the first time this year, is also giving the qualitative spell, spelling inventory three times a year. All the K-5 classrooms, we talked about the inter-reading module assessments, those are assessing the standards that are taught throughout the, throughout the, the program. And the module assessments, a module is usually somewhere from four to six weeks, so they're assessing within that, that time period. We have used for the past several years, the Level Literacy Intervention and, and Tier 3 Instruction for K-5. Last year, we also added the University of Florida Literacy Institute's program called UFLY to help with Tier 3 intervention. I know, I had to write it out, because I, I call it UFLY. And the Core FOTIC Survey, and it assists with the screening and the progress monitoring for Tier 3 for K-5. Grade 6 through 8 also started this year to use the LLI within the assisted reading. If you remember, I didn't write this down, but we did talk about the fact that we leveled the reading, the reading program at JFK. And we made a true Tier 3 with the LLI research-based instruction for intervention, and we also have, that's the assisted reading. And we also have the strategic reading, which is using the, the homegrown comprehension small group curriculum. So, we have two different groups now. And grade 6 through 12, as we talked about, they have the district-created assessments. They have school-wide rubrics to assess the tasks that are created by the educators. And they, they use their district-created assessments, common assessments, and the directors are, well, in this case, it's Nick. Joel as well, though, because Joel uses, Mr. Sineh uses writing rubric within social studies at 612 level. And they have common assessments that they're data-tracking and working with their teachers on. And all of the levels at, in ELA, use a model of teaching that allows time for student practice and application of skills. So, that's where we are with ELA. For math, we have the K-5 Ready Diagnostic. It's similarly the use to what, that we use Easy CBM for reading. It informs Tier 2 and Tier 3 small group instruction. And as I mentioned before, the MyPath is personalized instruction, so it meets the kiddo where they are, whether they're struggling or they need to go further than where the grade level is. K-8 is using teaching of prerequisite skills as a proactive approach to ensure all students are getting better access to grade-level materials. I should mention here that this year, again, we, the math intervention course was one teacher last year, or the last several years. Now, there's one per grade level, and they are working, they did some work over the summer, working on strategies for Tier 3 and breaking them into where the, the skills that they would need help in, so that the teacher's ready to go with different skills, depending on how they come in. At the high school level, Algebra 1, Geometry, Algebra 2, and Precalculus, they have weekly targeted spiral reviews assignments completed in Delta Math. The Fundamental course focuses on Algebra 1. So, right now, a student comes in and is taking Algebra 1 and the Fundamental at the same time, and they're working on those skills. As you recall, we decided in the spring, I believe of last year, to, or maybe fall of this year, to bring in the Algebraic Foundations course for next year. And that will mean that students that would have gone into the Foundations course and done both concurrently, are going to take Algebraic Foundations their freshman year, then they will move on to Algebra 1 their sophomore year. So, that should be much stronger help for students strengthening those skills and actually gaining understanding of what, of what they need for Algebra 1. And then the mindset and strategies of building thinking classrooms, I think we've talked about that. I know we have a curriculum, I think we have up here as well. It's practiced regularly in the math classrooms. It's about student engagement and having, and fostering collaboration among the students and having them actually have the discourse around the problem-solving and explaining why, how they're getting answers, why, where it's coming from. That's practiced regularly in the 612 classrooms. And actually, some work is beginning of the 35 classrooms as well. So, there is a little bit happening now, but Mr. Ponti is going to expand that with some professional learning and with a book study with some of the math consultants. So, where do we go? Questions? We need to look at what factors impacted grade 8 last year and what supports and intervention are needed at the middle school. We've had a lot of conversations over the past year about this. And I think when we look at the slides we just looked at, it's clear that that is an area we really need to start delving a little more deeply into, making sure we're, we're meeting kids where they are and strengthening the weak areas. We also need to talk about how are we putting interventions in place for our current grade 9 students when we look at the grade 8 scores from last year? Obviously, we need to give them some support. One thing we've done already for grade 9 in math is we have, through a grant, we have an after-school math tutoring program once a week, and we've targeted students that, that we feel could benefit from some strengthening of, of skills in after-school. And it started on October 16th, and we are, we are scheduled to run it through the end of May. And we're trying to make it a fluid course. We're already looking to maybe bring in another teacher when we get closer to the holiday or right after to take a few more students. But if students show growth and, and feel that they can be exited out, we can take other students that might start slipping as the year goes on. So, it's, it's definitely a fluid model. So, just because we have some students there now doesn't mean they finish the year there. It also doesn't mean others aren't added. And, let's see. The academic directors, they are going to be a presence in the classroom at all levels regularly. They, they're working with teachers during department meetings and professional learning sessions. They're also working with teachers at all levels on instructional strategies that will increase student engagement and/or increase students' mastery of grade-level standards, like that building thinking classrooms that Mr. Ponti, it was, it was there when, Mr. La Mesa had brought it into math, but he has expanded that into science as well and trying to bring it down. So, we're really, teachers are engaging in that on a regular basis, and it seems to be, the students seem to be really engaged in it. And then, they work with, they're working with the building administrators to help move our goals and the district improvement plan and school improvement plans forward. They're helping plan professional learning. They may not be delivering it, because they're delivering a secondary one on that day, but they've been working with the elementary teachers to put plans in place. So, they did one on October 14th for, for reading, and November 4th is math dedicated. So, Mr. Ponti has worked with all of his math consultants and the elementary principals to, to design a day where everybody's getting the same information and working on the same things. And they're actually moving schools. So, all kindergarten will meet at one building, all grade 3 will meet at another building. So, it's across grade levels, across district. So, they're all working on the same standards, they're all working on the same skills, and they're sharing strategies. So, that's actually where we are right now. That's my last slide. I can, I don't want to close it out, because if you might have questions or want me to go back.
Questions? Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
So, I won't take too long tonight, because I got the joy of having some discussion in curriculum subcommittee. So, thank you, we did review this in subcommittee before tonight and had really robust conversations. So, I appreciate that opportunity and seeing it again as like a helpful refresher. A couple of things that I just want to point out and share, I think it's, I liked your beginning slides of sharing kind of how, what other assessments we use as a district, because I think it's really important to look at multiple data points. As a parent, just looking at the state assessment is just one.
Exactly.
One point.
Yep.
And thinking critically about how we use those multiple data points in our district improvement plans and our school improvement plans to shape decisions. I also appreciated you sharing kind of how the data's looked at, how you have administrative meetings. I'd like to learn maybe a little bit more, not tonight, but maybe in subcommittee meetings, about kind of what does that look like in school practice? Are there data teams? Are there professional learning communities? How are we supporting teachers' use of data and planning? Especially since there's such significant gaps, like we can't intervene our way out of some of these data points.
Yes.
So, we need to adjust just overall classroom, tier 1 instruction. So, thinking about how we use that to do that. Another wonder of mine, and this is maybe a, a long-term decision, or maybe just a wonder in moving with our district improvement plan, I would love in kind of future presentations to be able to look at the years and look at what were some of our strategic goals and what did we strategically implement? And where are we seeing impacts?
Absolutely.
And where have we had unfortunate challenges? So, I think I, you did a very nice, delicate job of sharing some of the challenges. But I think it's important for folks to know, when you cut staffing, you change a schedule at a middle school, you don't have teams, you have class sizes of 30, you have staff who are, long-term staff who are leaving us, and we have then just openings and long-term subs in our classrooms, that's going to impact achievement. And I think we need to look at kind of what's our long-term plans and how do we support that? And how are we using data to make those decisions? So, thank you for helping us do that.
No problem. And I just want to, I know you don't have, I don't have to answer, but we did discuss actually looking at that, the internal district data at a Curriculum Committee meeting, and I'd like to do that, especially towards the end of the year, so that, that is a way we can look at growth throughout the year. Right? These are not.
Mr. Ryder, did you have?
Yeah, very briefly. Now that you've presented this, could we just get a copy of that?
You will.
Because it was a lot to digest.
You will, yes, you will.
Okay, and the follow-up, you may not know this, but you mentioned that there was like an after-school math tutoring at the middle school?
At Enfield High.
At Enfield High.
We do plan to start one for the middle school as well, for both ELA and, but staffing was a difficulty at this time of, of the year. We, the, the high school one is, this is year 3, I think, of that program. So, we have a staff that is like, when are we starting? We want to go. The middle school, it was with turnover and things, it was a little bit difficult to get staffing. I told Ms. Brown that we will repost again in a couple of months, at the, probably right after the holiday, to be honest, because this is not a time to start a, a program right now. But with all the days off and vacations coming up, but then we will have it running from, we'll, we'll recruit in December, we'll start it in January, and we'll run it all the way through the end of May.
So, with that in mind, can we try to have this on like one of our late bus days? Because I know.
They are.
Okay.
They're exactly.
That was going to be my other question.
It's Thursday at the high school and it's Wednesday at the middle school.
Because that's when we have our busing.
They correlate with the buses, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Mr. Kober?
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Middleton. So, just a couple of questions. I know you, obviously, the main focus was the assessments on like English and math, and obviously, math seems kind of like more the, the focus area, just because we're, you know, there's more opportunity to improve on that.
Right.
So, just can you clarify, and I think you touched on it, just from my understanding, so that the students that are identified for intervention, is it strictly off of the, like, the assessments? Or can they just be referred like at any point through the classroom teacher?
It is off of, it's not off of, the assessments I shared today, I should have said this, were all the state-mandated ones that we have to take. So, anything the state says we have to take, and they publicly share out, that's what we have here. The assessments on that second slide are the ones that we use internally, and those assessments are given three times a year, so fall, winter, spring. Those are the ones that are used to identify, begin to identify students for Tier 2 and Tier 3.
Okay.
If you have questions about a student, both math and reading, have additional assessments if you want to double-check and make sure you're correct saying the student needs intervention, or you don't know whether it's Tier 2 or Tier 3. And yes, they can use classroom information as well. But the, the diagnostics are the beginning point of identifying kiddos that are flagging.
Okay.
And just because they're flagging on one assessment, doesn't mean that they.
They may necessarily need a full intervention, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Like, obviously, if the kiddo is acing everything in this one assessment, you're going to do a follow-up. You're going to meet with the student, you're going to give them something else to make sure it wasn't just an anomaly of that one day.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they're one day.
A bad test or something. So, awesome. Can you speak a little to, to like, I know we have a lot of like different apps and stuff through like the iPads that the students have. Do we have like different, I know you talked about the assessment, but are there like software programs that they can use for like homework to like work on math that can kind of be like monitored or kind of like?
We do have, at the elementary level, we have, oh my God, we were using Fact Fluency, we're not anymore, because one came within the Ready platform, Fluency Flight. That is something that's like a quick practice app that they can use. At the high school levels, they're using something, it's not really an intervention, but they're using something called Delta Math, which they're doing their assignments through. And it allows the teachers to, to view the work and look at the work in a different way.
No, that makes sense. And I was kind of curious to that, because I know like, like a lot of us when we grew up and we were doing math, it was pen and paper, and we were told we'd never have a calculator. And here we are, everybody has a calculator. Obviously, we're, we're integrating technology now into a lot of it. But at the same time, you know, traditional homework, I feel like you got to be careful just using that, because students could obviously just, you know, run it through AI and it'll do the forum, and you can even quick show your work, and it'll, you know. So, if there's an actual like dedicated program where they could kind of do it in, you probably get a better picture of how they're actually performing.
They are, they're not really using the, they're not using it all the ti, middle school uses iReady for math homework a lot. The elementary isn't using it as much for homework, because it's, there's, there's more opportunities for it within the day, where the teacher can kind of be there if the child is, you know, if a student's getting stuck or something like that.
Yeah.
But, and the, the Fluency Flight could be something that's done if there's small group going on, that could be something a student works on for a little bit of time before they move to the next rotation, those types of things. But yes, we, we are also, though, trying to make sure that we're using apps that we have purchased.
Yeah.
And/or have control, like the data, the whole data privacy thing, some of those free apps, we have to be very careful.
Makes sense.
So, we're trying to do an approved list type of thing. So, some things that we were using, we're not using anymore, whether because the Fluency Flight, it was, no, I mean, sorry, Fact Fluency, we were paying extra for that, and then Ready Math came out with this one that were, that was already included.
That we already had a contract with, or what have you.
Exactly, so.
That makes sense, awesome. I'm sure when I look it over, maybe I'll have some more, I'll follow up offline, but thank you for, for tonight.
No problem.
Anybody else? Mr. Gauss?
Following up on Mr. Kober's question.
Sure.
You said you're going to come up with a, an approved list of apps and things for the kids to use.
Yes.
Are there also resources for those parents?
That's one of the reasons we're looking at that. We'd like something for elementary, when iPads go home, for parents to know what apps we have on there that students can access for extra practice, extra work, and that parents can do with them, or monitor at least.
Yeah, that, like, one of my concerns is, of course, I went through, through all this elementary stuff in the 70s, it's not the same. And I try to help him, and I, I can get him the answer, but it's not how they want the answer.
Right.
So, it'd be good for the parents to have materials to help them help their kids.
Dr. Wiley and I have been having conversations about what that should look like in bringing Mr. Flynn and Mr. Ponti in, to make sure that we're using apps that are actually appropriate to what we're, what we're doing and what we expect the kids to do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If I could just chime in as a parent, you get whenever they're in a new unit of math, or typically even reading, we get like what the unit is about and kind of how to support at home, especially for math, because they do teach it a little bit differently. The other thing is, the kiddos, my daughter came home recently with a clever badge, and she made it very known that she's got a clever badge now, and she can go on MyPath and like, da-da-da-da-da.
She can, yeah.
So, I think there are ways. I would also share Parent Square and Parent Teacher newsletters. They do a lot of sharing.
They do.
Kind of what they're teaching, kind of what, how parents can help that at home. So, I think there's ways to strengthen that, and I think we're working on some of those communication strategies. But there is a lot of communication that goes home to families about what's being taught in class.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to bring up, when we were in curriculum, having that discussion, which might be good information for just people listening, that we were going to do like a kind of internal audit of the curriculum.
Yes.
Just to make sure that we're teaching at the right times to meet up with the state standards and all that, just.
Right. I met with Mr. Ponti today about the, his curriculum plans, and the 6th, 7th, and 8th are going to look at the curriculum documents for math. Also, though, we're going to look at, we need to look at grade 8, between grade 8 and Algebra 1, for that Algebraic Foundations course, and what should go in there. So, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of looking at the math curriculum 6 through 9 this year and through the summer.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Anybody else? All right. Ms. Nelson, thank you very much for your presentation. That was a lot of information.
I know, it was lots of.
But thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, Alex took me off. Okay.
All right.
Bye.
All right. Number seven, Superintendent's Report. Mr. Macio?
All right, we're going to turn it over to Jennifer Vasquez-Ramos, and she's holding down the fort tonight for us.
Good evening, everyone. I am Jennifer Vasquez-Ramos, and I will be sharing some updates that have happened in the past two weeks, and some future events. Starting off with sports, all sports, regular season are done. And for the girls and boys soccer, they will be having their home games. The girls' soccer game will be on Friday, October 31st at 2:00 p.m. And for the boys' soccer game, it will be on Saturday, November 1st at 11:00 a.m. For field hockey, we have an away game on Wednesday, November 5th at 3:00 p.m. And finally, for sports, football senior night at high school would be a home game, and it will be next Friday, November 7th at 6:00 p.m. Now, for events, just last week, on Thursday, we have started using the late buses, and they have been, they have been going really well. Along with that, this past Wednesday, EHS had, students have completed the PSAT test, and that also went really well. And tonight, the National Honor Society will be hosting their induction, and will be welcoming 50 new members. Along with welcoming new members, currently, the freshmen are electing their class officials. Not only that, but also Class of 27 are having a Red Robin fundraiser. If you would like to support the Class of 27, you may go to Red Robin. And finally, for events, on Wednesday, November 5th, Buzz Robotics will be hosting a family steam night event. This event is open to everyone, and will be from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the Enfield High School cafeteria. Now, for seniors at EHS, seniors, remember that this Thursday, on October 30th, there will be cap-and-gown measurements, and it will occur during all the fourth waves in the auditorium. If you're interested in purchasing extra tassels, you may do so for the cost of $6. This will be the only time that tassels will be sold. And also, seniors, the senior brass are now available and are due by Wednesday, November 26th. There are only 150 slots available, so please make sure to get yours submitted before the deadline. Now, lastly, for important reminders, just a quick reminder for any parent that has signed up for the Student Parent Teacher conferences, tomorrow, Enfield High School will be having their afternoon conferences from 11:30 a.m. to 2:20 p.m. Now, for AP exam and payment orders, so for any student that is enrolled in any advanced placement courses, the window for the payment of the exam is still open. Students have free reduced lunch, will have no paying fees, and if payment is needed, the deadline for the payment is by Wednesday, November 5th. The payment may be done through Parent Square, pay, money order, cash, or check. And if any student is wishing to take one or more AP exams, they must also complete the registration process and payment by Wednesday, November 5th. A message has been sent to parents and families through Parent Square with further details. And finally, any student who is interested on going to the Quebec field trip at the Enfield High School, please visit Madame Gangner for more details about the trip and the requirements needed to register for the trip. And that is all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quebec, I want to go. Sounds like fun.
A couple of different things, just for updates. And so, first of all, I just want to make you aware that we did update the district website related to the school hours. We came across an error in terms of the integrated pre-K PM class. And for instances when we have two-hour delays, the integrated pre-K PM class still does come in. So, we had it shown correctly for Stowe. We did not have it shown correctly for Enfield Street. So, Enfield Street, integrated PM on two-hour delays, you get to come to school from 1:00 to 3:30. So, it has been corrected on the website, and Mr. Lord has made his folks aware over there. Secondly, and I think this goes related to Michelle Middleton's presentation this evening, so you hear a lot about, what are we going to do? What are the next steps? What are we looking for? What are our look-fours? And you've heard me speak in the past about walkthroughs that, you know, we've begun to do within the buildings. And I know specifically that at the cabinet level, we do go into the buildings together at this point. We sort of break them out over every few weeks into which building we're going to go to. But I do want to thank the teachers that are, that we're going into. Since the last board meeting, we went through, from the cabinet perspective, we went and visited every K-2 specialized program. So, this isn't limited to just the regular education classrooms. We're going through and looking at all of the different variety of programming that we have. The high school, central office, the administrators and the, and the teachers. We did a walkthrough last week. I failed to remember which day of the week it was, they all blur together. But there was a number of us, probably at least 20 of us, that went through and scattered them around the building, and a very detailed schedule that needed to be followed. So, outstanding in terms of that. And then, just even today, I took part in a walkthrough over at Crandall School with Mr. Ponte and Mr. Flynn, and Mr. Dupere and Ms. Marchese, in terms of going through and looking at the third and fourth grade. And the focus area that we were looking at, and this, again, directly related to Ms. Middleton's presentation, was the tier-one small group instruction. So, we were really going through and looking and trying to find, you know, sort of areas of strength and areas for growth, and the debrief, and then Mr. Dupere and Mr. Marchese will, will work through that with their staff, a variety of staff. So, a lot of good work happening in terms of that, and I would say that the visibility and all of us talking, sort of the same talk at this point, should be beneficial moving forward. Coming up, next, next Friday, the, well, two Fridays, the, the 7th, we have scheduled our next round of superintendent and deputy superintendent student focus groups. So, we do have those taking part again this year. We're running them at JFK and at Enfield High School. So, Mr. White, Mr. Longy, and myself will meet with a number of students. Remember, we did this last year, we probably had anywhere from six to 10 kids. I've asked Mr. White to sort of increase the number for us, and I'm really looking for a wide range of students. You know, I, we, I take part in the high school advisory program with Ms. Clark, so this is a separate piece that we can continue for next steps at. And I would say that really our focus area that we're going to be utilizing is going to be the school culture and climate. That will be a piece for us to be working on and to hear directly from the kids, related to how they feel as though it's going and what we can do for next steps. And I'm really hoping that we can utilize that group to actually identify and create some type of programming that we can bring forward, at least a couple of times during the year. Lastly, not lastly, I should say, but I do just want to, obviously, it was, it was a very rough Friday afternoon through, as the district continues to grieve the loss of, of our student. But I do want to acknowledge the amount of hours and time and effort that the combined town and school crisis team spent, trying to make sure that we had the appropriate supports ready for the kids. And I should say the staff, because obviously, the, the staff was impacted, I would say, greatly at the, at JFK, because the student had only been at the high school for a few months. But there's, these are, these are situations that I hate, obviously, for a variety, a number of reasons. There is no two of these that I've ever gone through, and sadly, I, I can think of a number of them that I've had to go through at this point, that are the same. And when this came about, this group of folks immediately sprang into action to try, to try to put our school supports in place. As part of that, just for an understanding for everybody, there's a very delicate balance, because we are communicating with the family, which is going through an incredibly tragic loss. So, giving them the time and space before we even reach out, and then giving them the ability to share their sort of wishes and desires in terms of what, what they wish, if anything, to be shared, and when they feel as though we are able to be able to prepare. So, it's incredibly hard to get that correct. The group utilized for this particular instance, obviously, the best practices that are, come from the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, and their post-vention sort of toolkit that they've created and designed for schools. As anybody who had seen the script that was included through the email that was sent out to the high school families, that script is directly from that program. I mean, you can, you can edit it and tweak it a little bit, but for the most part, we tried to stick with the best practices that were in place there. On Monday and Tuesday, obviously, yesterday and today, we had a number of additional counselors in place at both schools. Obviously, those counselors remain available for the kids. And those counselors were not just the school counselors, but we had a number came from youth services. We had counselors that came in from our school-based, our school-based health center, CHC. So, and we actually had some folks reach out to us from the State Department of Education, asking in terms of what they could do for assistance or support. A number of communications were sent home for parents, because obviously, this doesn't end just when they leave school. So, those resources are there and available. And I would just, obviously, publicly, for anybody who's listening online, remind everybody that, you know, should you require or feel as though you're having any need for, for mental health assistance, 988 or 211 will get you some assistance or support. 988 is a much more direct means of getting to your mental health support, but 211, you can also, you'll be able to navigate your way through to get there. So, again, it's a incredibly, incredibly difficult time, and will continue to be so. But it's, 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 I guess I just summarize by saying it's an incredibly hard, difficult balance to maintain in these situations. And, you know, I'm very thankful for the amount of time. Most of Friday night, as early as we could Saturday morning, multiple meetings Saturday, and then the staff themselves actually got together for a Teams call on Sunday as well, with a very large turnout. So, the staff was ready, they were there, and they were wanting to provide assistance and support. So, I thank all of those folks for their time and efforts, and obviously, our thoughts and prayers continue to go out to the, to the family. Now, on a less somber note, my last remarks, I just want to publicly, while, while I'm sure we may see some of you again in another meeting, I just want to thank the five outgoing board members for your, for your time that you've spent with me over the course of this little over a year. But, and I tried to do some research in terms of the district website and what's placed on there, to figure out how many years everybody's spent and all that different types of pieces. So, if I get the years wrong, forgive me. Ms. Cre, six, six years? Four years? I thought it was three different st, see? Again, thank you very much. Dr. Cowan, six, four? Four. Mr. Ryder? Eight? And then some. Charlotte, I believe, six?
Seven.
Seven-ish?
Seven.
Vinny? Yeah.
It was the perfect opportunity!
Yeah. And I believe Tina, you take, you take the cake. Would I count 14 years? So, just please know, you know, we could never pay you enough, and you don't get paid anything for this, obviously. But we, we-- Yeah, I'm going to double that pay of zero. But we thank you for all of your time and all of your efforts, and it's, you know, I was speaking to somebody today about, you know, people think that being a board member is just coming, you know, every two weeks and sitting up on this dais. And I think we all know, it's, it's, you guys are out every night.
Yeah.
And, and the amount of time and effort and energy and, and time you spent away from your family. So, on behalf of, obviously, us over here on this part of the dais and everybody else, we, I want to thank you and thank you publicly. I would say enjoy your last board meeting, but I don't know if that's possible. So, that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Macio. Okay, so next is audiences. Do we have any this evening? Okay, so when you come up, just your name and your relationship to the district, and everybody gets four minutes. Thank you. Okay, first up, Danielle Gerard.
Danielle Gerard, parent. Tonight, we say goodbye to some truly remarkable individuals who have left a lasting mark on our town and our schools. Our outgoing board members have faced some incredibly tough decisions over the years while sitting up here on the dais. I know those choices weren't always easy, and at times, they came with their share of criticism. But one thing we must always remember is this, we can't make everybody happy. But what matters most is that every decision made was done with a greater good in mind for our town, our schools, our staff, and most importantly, our students. Tina, Scott, and Dr. Cowan, through the years, you every, remained steadfast in your commitment to our students. Whether it was pushing forward mental health initiatives, advocating for both competitive and fair education for all, or helping raise an incredible amount of money for CCMC to support children with cancer. Your passion and dedication have made a tremendous difference. Your knowledge, integrity, and heart have carried this district far. You've stood up for your truths, and I truly applaud you for that. Charlotte and Jean, your unwavering support for our students have been nothing short of inspiring. Time and again, you've chosen people over party, and that deserves recognition. You've approached every issue with empathy, open-mindedness, and genuine care for our kids, their families, and our staff. Someone recently told me that I'm too empathetic, but I don't see that as a flaw, I see that as a strength. And I see that same strength in all of you, Tina, Scott, Dr. Cowan, Charlotte, and Jean. Your empathy hasn't held you back, it's helped you get things done. As you step away from this dais, I hope to continue seeing you stand, stand up for what's right in whatever ways that may take shape. I also hope that our next board can fill the big shoes you're leaving behind and bring their own ideas, energy, and support to this community we all love. I'm truly sad to see you go. I had hoped to serve alongside you all one day on this dais, but I know that when the time comes, when any of us need your wisdom or guidance, you'll be there to help us stay true to who we are and who we serve, every child, every day. Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle. Okay. Bob? Chrisati?
Bob Chrisati, 1320 Enfield Street. I guess councilperson. Former mayor. It has been an honor to be able to come in front of you this evening to say a few words. First of all, Jean and Charlotte, thank you for your years of service. This is a very difficult situation, but I applaud each of you for working together with your counterparts to do what is correct and do what is right for the children of Enfield and for the overall well-being of our Board of Education. So, I thank both of you for that. First of all, I have to say good evening to Deputy Superintendent and Mr. Superintendent. Madam Chair, members of the Board of Education, and our community. I would like to take a moment to extend my sincere appreciation to three individuals who have served our community with dedication, professionalism, and heart. My three friends who I've worked a long time with, from the council side and as personal friends. Each of you have given countless hours to the Enfield Board of Education, helping strengthen our schools and guide our district through both challenges and opportunities. Public service requires patience, collaboration, and a genuine commitment to doing what is best for our children, qualities each of you have demonstrated time and again. Scott, your passion for communication and your ability to engage families have helped foster transparency and-- foster transparency and community trust, and I thank you for that. Tina, your longstanding leadership and steady hand have provided a strong foundation for this board for 14 years. Always keeping the students at the forefront of your work every day, and I thank you for that. Dr. Jerry, your thoughtful insights and advocacy of student health and well-being will leave a lasting mark on our district. And you've spent a lot of time on mental health and also during coming out of this pandemic, always caring for our children. And I thank you for that. I want to thank you for your service, your integrity, and your unwavering commitment to our schools. Your contributions will continue to benefit generations of Enfield students. Once again, I can stay up, stand up here, sit down. This has been an honor to serve alongside each of you. I know that each of you will still be visible in this community and will always answer a phone call from me. I wish you nothing but the best. Thank you. From the bottom of my heart, from my family's heart, I wish you success. And thank you for your years of commitment, and thank you, all of you, for your unwavering time away from your families to do this as a volunteer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
Maureen Griffin, ma'am, nice to not be the only one. First off, Dr. Jerry, Jean, you see the issues. You see the needs of our children, and you've worked together to try and bring them to light. And it didn't matter a dang thing what letter was after your name, and I appreciate that. I appreciate it more than you could ever know. Tina and Charlotte, you've shown that two people can work together. Two very strong women can see a goal, fight with each other every now and then, but work towards the goal. Again, without regard for the letter. You've set a great example, one that I hope is carried forward by the next board. Mr. Party Man, always there, always supporting everybody. The one thing that the kids have always said to you, that you said nah, never happening, now they're going to say it, you're fired. The kids love you, and you have been so good to so many, given so much time. This town has a great debt to all of you. And there's one thing that the best woman ever to live, that I've ever known, always When you don't like someone, do what you can to find something about them that you do like. And that's the only way to be able to deal with each other when you have so many disagreements. So hopefully, the people who are sitting up there, next time I come to talk to you, are able to do that with each other. And remember, you're up there for the children, for the schools, for the people in them working with the children. Not for agendas. The only agenda is the kids. Thank you.
Thanks, Maureen.
Kelsey McGuire Bruce, 63 Neelens Road. I just wanted to take a moment tonight to thank a few people whose dedication to our schools has truly made a difference. Jean, it was such a pleasure to get to know you as the Crandall representative when my years at Crandall, and now I look forward to seeing you and seeing your smile and hearing your words of encouragement every time I run into you at the checkout, which I'm there a lot. Your care for her students was always evident in your time here on the board, and I thank you for always putting them first. Dr. Kalman, thank you for bringing the students' mental health to the forefront and for your continued advocacy in supporting the whole child. You focus on early childhood education and its importance, and that has left a lasting impact on our community. Our students are better for it. Charlotte, you're one of a kind. After the last election, I forget if it was Chris or Andy, actually, who said, "Kelsey, she loves Dave Matthews." And I knew right then and there, you'd be a good one. You never let politics get in the way of what really mattered, our students and families. That kind of focus and heart is something special, and I'm so grateful for it. Scott, Mr. PTO, and so much more. I've learned so much from you. I've always admired your energy and your passion for supporting our students. Your school spirit matches my own, and your presence on this dais will be deeply missed. Thank you for all you've given to Enfield students and our community as a whole. And Tina, I'll try not to cry. You've meant so much to me. Your kindness, strength, and unwavering commitment have left an incredible mark on this district and me personally. Our conversations, your encouragement, and the way you lead with heart have shaped how I show up for this community. You've given so much of yourself to our schools and our students, and it shows in every corner of this district. I and many others are forever grateful for you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Kelsey.
Walter J. Cruzal, Chairman Emeritus. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kree, don't sell yourself short. It was six years, not four. I looked it up. It was six. I interviewed you, so I was here. It was six years, not four. So don't sell yourself short. The day I interviewed you, I knew you would be the, you'd be an awesome board member. So thank you for your service. Ms. Dr. Kalman, when I reached out to you with the problem we had with kindergarten kids coming in, and you got all the local pediatricians in a room, and we had meetings, that was a great asset to the town, and I'm for sure that's something that really helped at the time, and hopefully it still helps. Mr. Ryder, enfieldpto.com. That's all I got to say. You took something that was no communication, and you made it, I mean, it's a template that should be sold across the country. I swear to God. You could be, you could be a millionaire when it's all said and done. Just put a different town in front of it, ptocom. But great job. Thank you. Ms. LeBlanc, when I first came on, you helped me get acquainted. And, oh, by the way, I had black hair back in 2015 when I started, so it was like a year in that this turned gray. And I see gray coming on Mr. Ryder there, too. So I could, I know where it came from. I know where it came from. So, but thank you again, Ms. LeBlanc, for everything you helped me with. And I'm going to be old-fashioned. It's Chairman Riley, because I even looked it up in the dictionary. The man is not a gender, it's a title. But it's the old way, and now they switched it to the new way. But it's Chairman Riley to me, it always will be Chairman Riley to me. My predecessor is looking down today, saying, "You did an awesome job." He handed me a board that was fiscally sound. I handed off a board that was fiscally sound. You were handing off a board that's fiscally sound. So I thank you for all your work. We've been through, you acted as my vice chairman, and you feel the pain that we all, that we all chairmans feel. So that's all I'm going to say. And one more thing. You all made a difference in Enfield, every child, every day. So thank you all. And a round of applause for... Now I'm going home, because it's past my bedtime.
Thank you, Walter. All right. Board member comments. Ms. Kree, you asked me, you wanted to go first.
Oh, for my exit speech. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I would like to thank Danielle, Bob, Maureen, Kelsey, and Walter for such kind words of gratitude. Thank you very much. I would like to say that it has been an honor and a privilege serving on Enfield's Board of Education for the last four years. Running as a municipal politician for the board in Enfield or anywhere else would have been, it's out of the box for me. I was not interested in politics, but someone talked me into it, and I'm glad they did. But I have to say also, it was a great experience. I learned a lot. On my journey, I got to meet new people in the Enfield community through campaigning throughout the neighborhoods, enjoyed working with my colleagues on this board, making important decisions that impacted our students and their families. I thoroughly enjoyed attending the school events, such as the art exhibits, the music concerts, the classroom visits at Stowe, of course, being part of the Crandall family, where I attended the pride assemblies, their visiting authors' events, their school events, luncheons with the students, Field Day, and of course, reporting for the Crandall news. I enjoyed working with the administration, such as Ms. Middleton, Ms. Cenaros of Finance, Mr. Macio, and Mr. Longi. Thank you all for your expertise and your support. To Mr. Longi and Dr. Kalman, a special thank you for your input and encouragement on the Mental Health and Wellness Committee. I could not have done it without you, believe me. And to Maureen Griffith, thank you for your concerns and your support for the children always and in attending the Enfield Board meetings. So I will surely miss everyone. I will miss coming to the meetings. And I truly wish all the best for the students, staff, and families of the Enfield Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Who'd like to go next? Ms. Pick? Oh, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Coburn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll start off with just a friendly reminder that tomorrow, October 29th, is an early release day, but only for grades six to 12. On Tuesday, November 4th, all students have no school due to the municipal general election. Staff, however, will be engaged in various professional learning events throughout the day. There will be no school for students and staff on Tuesday, November 11th, in honor of Veterans Day. Speaking a little more to the tragedy that was recognized during our moment of silence at the commencement of this meeting and to what the superintendent mentioned, on Friday evening, the board was notified of the untimely passing of a 14-year-old Enfield High School student earlier that day, from what was being reported as a suicide. The student was described by teachers as clever, hardworking, kind, and quick to help other students in need. Members of her crisis response team were in hand at Enfield High School on Monday morning, when students were given the news during their first period class, and supports for grieving students is ongoing. Our thoughts and sympathies extend to her family, the student's family, friends, the class, and the community at large. Earlier on Friday, I had attended the Enfield Together Coalition's Enfield Connects kickoff event, which was held at the CT State at Nuntuck Campus. Enfield Connects is the launch of a townwide campaign to foster connections and encourage belongingness. Topics discussed included the growing feelings of loneliness in various age groups, as well as the physiological effects that it has. Speakers discussed stories from real people, shared examples of social connections, tips and tools to strengthen community bonds, and ideas on how to support people's health and well-being. Things that we realize are probably now more important than ever. As this is the concluding regular meeting of the 23 to 2025 Board, I wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge individual achievements of my fellow board members sitting here tonight. To Dr. Kalman, thank you for serving and focusing on mental and physical health of our students and youths across the Enfield community. You found an effective way of blending your background in pediatrics to service on the board. You have been a staunch advocate for addressing mental health needs and the role schools play in managing and mitigating related challenges. Your support and advocacy of partner organizations, such as KITE, our School Readiness Council, did not go unnoticed. To Mr. Ryder, serving four terms on this board is in and of itself an achievement worthy of recognition. Moreover, your commitment to volunteering and then deciding to volunteer some more sets a strong example to others. Your care and promotion of the parent-teacher organizations fostered greater communication and the dissemination of valuable information. You kept families engaged and in the know. Your knowledge of policy facilitated cumbersome revisions and kept the subcommittee moving forward. While you and I had plenty of topics where we disagreed on the course of action, you always maintained respectful dialogue and kept the bigger picture in mind. To Mrs. LeBlanc, while we both agreed on the value of asking questions here on the dais, we never quite agreed on what questions needed to be asked and answered. Nevertheless, you were a strong voice for what you believed in and a firm advocate for educators, the ETA, and the various support staff in our buildings. You highlighted concerns with infrastructure and the board's complicated relationship with the town, inner workings where, perhaps, there are greater opportunities for transparency and efficiency. You kept the focus on school modernization, classroom supports, and community conversations. With seven terms of service to the board, you've established a legacy of service that you should be proud of. To Ms. Kree, you've been an asset to the board, in part from your experience and expertise in the field of education, in part also because of your commitment to collaboration on issues. Your efforts, specifically on the Mental Health and Wellness Committee, paved the way for closer examination and support of social, emotional, and behavioral health concerns. Thank you for giving back to the community and promoting quality curriculum and education. To Chair Riley, you provided balanced leadership during a tumultuous term. You always remained focused on the children, promoted kindness, encouraged communication, civil discourse, and managed firmly and consistently. Thank you for your service and your commitment. Should I or any of the other incumbents seeking reelection fail to acquire a seat here again, you may see six new people up here. And if I don't get to speak to you tonight, your service is nonetheless valued, and we hope that all the outgoing members join us at our organizational meeting, which is scheduled for November 18th at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers, for a more proper farewell. To the 25 to 27 Board, we shall see you seated very soon. I hope you govern with intention, maintain high standards of professionalism, cultivate efficiency and responsiveness, encourage transparency and accountability, and continue to promote academic growth and achievement. Concluding with my quote, tonight coming from Andy Stanley, author of the book Next Generation Leader. Simply recognizing the need for change does not define leadership. The leader is one who has the courage to act on what he sees. A leader is someone who has the courage to say publicly what everybody else is whispering privately. It is not his insight that sets a leader apart from the crowd, it is his courage to act on what he sees and to speak up when everyone else is silent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Dr. Kalman, I saw your hand up before.
I just wanted to spend a few minutes just thanking a few people. First, my wife, for her enormous patience. This is a commitment, and my wife had to sacrifice a lot of time with me, and I deeply valued her encouragement and her patience. So thank you, Joanne. I love you. I also wanted to thank Andy and Steve, because you brought this board through a really tumultuous time, and I don't honestly know how you managed to do it, but you're a terrific team, and you got us through it miraculously. It was a really, really emotionally charged time, and yet you always had things under control and always with a smile. So I can't tell you how grateful I think we all are. I think we speak for all of us in the service that you've provided to this town. Jean, I think the fact that you and I work together so well is a testament to bipartisanship. It was really such a pleasure working with you over these last few years. And I think I would like to give a special thanks. Everybody on this board deserves a shout-out, but particularly to Charlotte and Tina, because they were models of leadership over the years. over these really, really difficult last four years or so. You guided us through these very, very difficult times in a very level-headed, practical, and far-sighted manner. And for that, you taught us what it means to be a chairperson. Sorry, Walter. And your example, I think, was an inspiration to all of us. So thank you. And then finally, I just wanted to thank the town of Enfield and the citizens of this town. I spent a good part of my youth here. And my career, most of my career, was spent in this town. And I have a deep sense of gratitude and debt to the town of Enfield and its citizens. I've been treated so well. And I think this service that I provided over the last four years is my very, very small way of repaying a debt. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Kalman.
All right. So I have a couple of updates, and then I'm going to get into a couple of thank yous as well. One is, I was incredibly excited to see the JFK electronic sign outside the school being used. So our community conversations was posted on that. I saw our half-day is posted on that. So I had shared a few times over the past couple of years that it's just been the weather that's been posted there, but it is nice to see school-related updates on that Board. So thank you to whoever's working that magic because I know that it was a complicated system. So whoever figured that out, thank you. I had meant, I heard Phil use some language, and the word transparency is often shared. And I think that there are some ways that we can really do that moving forward, things like posting our curriculum online, links to state standards, things that we're doing with sharing in Parents Square. I do have a wonder, because that last town council meeting, the town manager mentioned that the draft audit was with the superintendent. Is there any way we can get an update or when we'll have an update on that? Because it was mentioned that there's going to be some public sharing of that at their first meetings. I'm wondering if there's any update on that.
Ms. Macio would have to answer that question.
Or whatever you're comfortable just sharing. Will we get an update before? Because I had just heard publicly as a resident that there's going to be a presentation at, like, the first meeting.
It's still in draft form and hasn't been finalized. The draft is now at town council.
Perfect.
Or excuse me, I should say not town council. Excuse me. The draft is now with the town manager.
All right, perfect. My hope is that that will be shared with us and obviously then shared publicly. I know that this Board has done what we need to do regarding our budgeting policies and procedures. It's my hope that this audit leads to a better understanding of town budgeting practices and transparency over the town's oversight of their duties and supporting us as an educational institution. It's known that we've had historical underfunding. You can't be in charge for 18 of the last 20 years and not recognize that there just hasn't been an investment in public education. Another wonder that I have, sorry, through the chair, to the superintendent, is regarding the concerns coming November 1st around food insecurity. With SNAP being withheld, I know school funding seems to still be flowing as far as us able to offer breakfast and lunches. My wonder is, has there been any communication with our town about things that we're looking to do to support the food insecurity in our own community? I know so many of our families, we know from our own data, qualify fare-free or reduced lunch. So how are we looking to support our community and our families?
So yes, there has been conversation and discussion. And I actually just spoke with Diane Edwards yesterday regarding what we could potentially be doing within the schools so that snacks can still be made available to students.
Thank you. I'm just going to share as a community that is something that we just need to be honest about. Many of our students and families do rely on additional supports to just meet needs. And so thinking about how can we help out and try our best to give to others. Another thing I just wanted to add is, Meet the Candidates event happened. I want to thank the staff and the students and the residents who turned out to that. Steve, related to your comments about student focus groups, I asked every student there two questions, their favorite thing about their school, and if they could change one thing, what would it be? And an overall arching theme from the students, ranging from young to older, was concerns about their own peers' behavior. So I think your work and your focus area seems spot-on. And I also think it can be an instrumental way of making change by including our students in how we are shifting climate and culture work. Students are motivated to make change, and I think we need them to turn the needle in some of those areas. I also just want to note, last meeting, we did table the motion to repeal some of our foundational policies. I am just interested in kind of some of the thoughts around that. We had talked kind of after the meeting. But I do think it's important for folks to be paying attention to kind of the intent and policies being reviewed and the impact that those could potentially have on us as a district and students. I'm going to end tonight with my reflections on our five Board of Ed members who are not seeking reelection. I might have tried and begged and twisted arms, but it did not happen. So now I get some time to share my moments of honor in recognizing their service and deep commitment, collaboration, and care for Enfield's Public Schools. Jean and Dr. Kalman, you've worked tirelessly to assess and advocate for mental health supports for our students, efforts that have helped shape how we prioritize student wellness. My hope is that this work continues in the same collaborative spirit moving forward. Scott Ryder, you've been a strong and consistent voice for families, always bringing forward the perspective of parents and the Enfield PTO community. Your advocacy has reminded us of the importance of partnership between schools and families. And finally, Tina LeBlanc and Charlotte Riley, two long-serving leaders whose dedication and steady guidance have anchored this Board through many seasons of change. Your leadership and institutional knowledge have been a true gift to this community. Charlotte, you've led this term focused on our students. You've been supportive of me being me, even when I'm challenging, even when I ask a lot of questions. I appreciate how you have never let the noise distract you from your mission of supporting Enfield Public Schools. Tina, I don't know how to sum up the impact that you've had on me personally, this district, and in our community. You have consistently led with care, truly taking the time to listen, to empower others, and to ensure that every voice is heard. Thank you for being a mentor and a friend. Together, this group of five people have shown us what it means to work across differences with respect and always with students at the center. They've modeled the very best of public service. I thank you all for your positive, lasting impact that you've made on Enfield students and schools. And it's my hope that this collaborative spirit continues moving forward with the Board. I ask everybody to please vote. Make sure you have a plan. Early voting has already started, and Tuesday, November 4th, is Election Day. It's too late to come out during budget season. You need to show up now. Priorities for our community are set in November. Please vote.
Thank you, Ms. Pickett.
Can I just jump in? Because I failed to mention, related to the SNAP benefits going away. I did have some communication with Mr. Santinella. He's going to be coordinating a food drive. He just sent me the details on it. Must clearly be watching this evening. Or he could be sitting in the back.
You never know where Santa is.
He could have done this himself if he came up for public comment. But I'll do it for you. That's okay. Saturday, November 1st, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Enfield Food Shelf Urgent Food Drive. Please think about donating. Sorry, I did not notice you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so I was actually going to talk about the food drive. I think it's important to note that there are 3,000 residents losing SNAP benefits here in Enfield. And having multiple conversations with Representative Santinella between yesterday and today, he's very concerned about the residents in Enfield. And I think he's going to be having another conversation about how that's going to be affecting our school lunches. So I appreciate you doing that, Councilor Santinella. I just have a few words to say tonight. I just want to say that I've had the honor and privilege of being able to serve on the Board of Ed for the last 14 years. Thank you to the voters that voted me in and believed in my contributions to EPS. Based on leadership from both central office and staff, I have been able to be part of the creation of the Stowe Early Learning Center, Eagle Academy, the consolidation of Enfield High and Fermi, the JFK renovation, and so, so much more. The highlight of all that was accomplished is the academic benefits it brought our students, making sure STEAM was available to all EPS learners, keeping kids in special ed within their home district, increasing course offerings, and partnerships with Nuntuck in Lego. The list goes on and on. In 2011, I was just a mom trying to stop her kid's school from closing, stop redistricting, and stop going to the K-2, 3-5 model. I became an advocate for EPS based on my experience with my kids, teachers, and school culture. Teachers who gave extra help advocated for them when they were struggling in school, learned their interests, and made them love going to school to learn. My kids had amazing teachers and coaches during their EPS journey, which helped shape them into the adults that they are today. I have always said EPS was part of my village, and being on the BOE was one way to give back to the EPS and the community I grew up in and was raising my kids in. Not only did I meet teachers who were the backbone of EPS, but I have met some of the best people I know, whether it be helping a parent or family or fellow elected officials on both sides of the aisle. Chairwoman Riley, you are one of those people. You led this Board with integrity and grace. I know it was not easy, between dealing with budget cuts, a new superintendent, new BOE members that you had just met. You are truly a rock star. One aspect of your leadership that I admire is your ability to see things from all different angles and come up with solutions and compromises. One of your best qualities is the person and the mother you are to your kids. And at the end of the day, that's what matters most to both of us, is our families. Just remember, when you're having a bad day, activate that star power. And as we said earlier, the truth shall set you free. Superintendent Macio, thank you for coming to Enfield. It took me a while to appreciate your sense of humor, but we eventually got there. I do appreciate your candor, you being a budget novice and honest conversations. And I will always be available for BOE history lessons. Mr. Longi, thank you for always being the constant voice of reason. I admire your conviction and confidence when you make a decision because I am an over-thinker. You have done an outstanding job as a deputy superintendent. Dr. Kalman, I have so much admiration for you as a colleague. You are a bright light in some tough times on this Board. Your dedication to early childhood and youth mental health is unmatched. Your commitment to working with KITE, Stowe Early Learning, and Head Start does not go unnoticed. I have been honored to have been able to serve with you. Amanda Pickett, to say I have learned from you is an understatement. You have opened my eyes and helped me see life through a different lens, a lens which is more thoughtful and intentional. The world you are raising your kids in is different than mine. The political craziness, the racial tensions, the attacks on public education. You are a dedicated mom with so much love for your family and friends. Thank you for being well-versed in state standards, knowledge of grants, and where to find important data. Your want for clear support structures and expectations with visions of a graduate were always so important conversations we had at this dais. What will always come to the forefront is your fear advocacy for every student in EPS. Scott Ryder, my bestie in education, my wonder twin, we have had one crazy ride on this BOE. Thank you for being volunteer extraordinaire for EPS. Your dedication to helping and volunteering in schools, bringing us CCMCPJ Day, and your unwavering support to make schools brighter each day, each and every day, is simply amazing. Thank you for being the voice of reason in this craziness, your diligent work on the EPS policies, and being one of the best Board members I've had the privilege of working with. We still have to DoorDash Burger King sometime soon, and we know that Taylor Swift wrote some of her songs about our BOE journey. And hey, look, we are no longer on JV. It just took us eight years and 14 years. To the EPS staff who have supported me, I am eternally grateful. It is the least I can do for the shining stars that work with Enfield's kids every day. I would be remiss if I didn't thank my mainstays of support. Thank you to Gina Sacala, John Santinella, and Bob Crisati. We've had some pretty tough conversations, well, mostly with Gina, where she says, "I will continue this conversation when you come down." And there might have been a few phone hang-ups between me and Santa. Bob and I had less fiery conversations, but even when we disagreed, we could move forward. It always warms my heart that numerous students and families come up to you and Marilyn, Bob, thanking you for the help you've given their families. Gina, John, and Bob, your unwavering support, advice, and care for this town mean more than words can ever say. I have met so many amazing people along this journey who became friends and confidants. Liz Davis, thank you for always believing in me and being a tireless advocate for our students. To those who always checked in and gave advice, Lori Gates, Lori Barksdale, Maureen Griffin, my squad friends, Deb LaCory, who has come to every one of my swearing-in meetings and is here tonight for my last meeting, Kelly Jackson, Kelsey McGuire-Bruce, I know I'm forgetting a bunch, but you checking in meant the world to me. To the EDTC leadership, Ian Graves, Marilyn Crisati, Jen Briet, Carrie Monifort, thank you for your continued supports. Thank you to my sister Karen, who always reminded me that Mom and Dad were watching. To my nephew John LeBlanc, it was an honor to sit at this dais with you for four years. I always hoped that people would see that family comes before politics. The mutual respect we gave each other with our different political views should be something people need to remember and learn from these days and these divisive political times. Lastly, to my family, Steve, Regina, Cam, and Colin, I know me being on the Board of Ed has not always been easy on us as a family. And I know each of you had different feelings about me being on the BOE. It meant so much to me to be able to give each one of you your diplomas. I will never be able to thank you enough for your support and patience. To say me and Dad are proud of the adult you have become is an understatement. Of all the things I have accomplished on the BOE in life, you three are truly my greatest accomplishments. Thank you.
Anybody else want to go?
Sure. Being the youngest person on here, at least in time, I would like to say that when I came up here, I expected a lot of arguments and non-agreement. But it hasn't been that way, not at all. I think everybody here wants the same thing. We just have different ways of getting there. In the time I've spent, and it's been a lot of time, not on the dais, but with everyone else, I think we all get along pretty darn well and try to work toward that common goal. And I'd like to thank everybody that's here, that I've been with, especially Jean. Jean and I get along great. We've walked campaign trails and things like that and had some fantastic conversations. But I just want to say it's been an honor because none of us know if we'll be here at the next meeting. And I've really enjoyed my time with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goss. Ms. Kuschny, you want to go?
Like Mr. Coburn,
Like Mr. Coburn, as he mentioned about the Enfield Connects event that was hosted on Friday, I too had an opportunity to go and was actually, there's several others there with us. And I won't reiterate what he shared about it, but one thing that I appreciated that they had is they left us with a challenge to consider about how to be more intentional about connecting. And so the first challenge was determining how many times you're going to commit to connecting with someone or others, like how many? And how are you planning to connect with them? And then if you were to reduce your time on social media by a certain amount of minutes per day, what would you do instead? And then the last thing was connecting with a person that you haven't spoken with in months. So I just appreciated these really, just challenges to really get you thinking about how to be intentional about connecting, because there really is a lot to say about people that are lonely out there and needing to feel connected with those in their community. I did want to thank Dr. Wiley. I appreciate that she recognized Digital Citizenship Week last week, sending out resources through Parent Square. Within her posts, each day there was something celebrating this Digital Citizenship Week, and there was often mention of commonsensemedia.com. And if parents haven't had a chance to check out that site, it really is a valuable asset for parents as they're really needing to learn about the different platforms and privacy and understanding the deep web and the dark web. There was just a vast amount of information. They had ultimate guides to algorithms and all the different social media, boys' digital lives, that I just thought was excellent and such a great, a great resource for families. And I did want to share a book. I know, Tina, you'd mentioned about books, and I just, but in light of it being Digital Citizenship Week, I just, this was a book, and I'm willing to share with anyone who might have some leisure time now for reading. It's called Tech Exit: A Practical Guide to Freeing Kids and Teens from Smartphones. And it's just a, I mean, it talks about a lot of things that you probably expect to hear about smartphones, but a lot of things that you don't expect to hear. And I think what's neat at the end is the author really encourages parents to consider what their goals are for their children and to consider how might smartphones help or hinder those goals. So it just is a really good, a good read. And I did want to take the time to share just very briefly, just to say thanks to those with whom I've been serving for years or, you know, just months. But I just really appreciate the opportunity to get to know you and to develop friendships and to be really encouraged and supported. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kushman. Mr. Ryder?
I saw the craziest football game last Friday. I was shocked. So I've had the pleasure of calling a lot of EHS varsity football games over the last few years, both in partnership with Guy Barasa, and then I'm also Guy's fill-in. And so the Eagles won. We pulled it off, 62-54. It felt like a college basketball or a high school basketball game I was calling, not a football game. Yeah, they scored three touchdowns in the first quarter. I'm looking at the stats, I'm like, we've scored more points in the first half than we had this season, and it just kept going. So I wanted to remind everybody, as our student rep spoke about, it is senior night. But it's not just senior night for our football athletes, it's also senior night for our cheer team, it's senior night for our marching band. So I hope that everybody makes it out next Friday, November 7th at 6, well, the game's at 6, so the pre-game ceremonies will probably begin shortly around 5:30, I would guess. But I'm happy to do that again, so I'll see you guys there next Friday, you'll hear me. But yeah, no, it was a great game, and that's the kind of stuff that I like doing. That's why I got involved in this a very long time ago. But what a lot of people, and some of us thanked our neighbors and the people that voted for us. My story is slightly different in that I had just moved here like three, four years earlier. The first year we lived here, I didn't even have a student in Enfield schools. When we moved here, my kids turned one and four in our house. So Lauren was still a year and change from starting at HMS in kindergarten, but I walked her to school on that first day, and I introduced myself to Mrs. Mizzoli. She was our principal, that was her last year. She retired, but we've kept her around for a lot of things. But I introduced myself to Bonnie, and I just said, listen, I work part-time, I'm a stay-at-home dad, my wife has the nine-to-five, I'm blessed to help raise our kids, and anything I can do in our school, please let me know. Like, I literally live a block away, I'm going to walk Lauren here, we're going to walk home, I made the kids tell me three things about your day on the 10-minute walk home. And Lauren would tell me 100, and my son would say, "It's over. We had lunch, and I had art today." One fact had to be school-related, but basically it was all just subject-related. So that's really the three people I want to thank, you know, in addition to recognizing my current board members and all the board members I've served with over eight years. I want to thank Bridgette and Lauren and Elliot for sharing Dad with Enfield, because they gave me the license to do something that personally was very important to me, and they knew that. So what quickly was the shine for my wife of like, "Oh, look at him go, and he's the one, Dad, there helping out and all this stuff." And yeah, and then it became this for a decade. But I know she's proud of me and what I've done, and I think that's why I was given that leash. So I just wanted to thank those three people for giving me to you people, and I'm sorry that they did that at times. I told these two ladies how much I respect them, our two former, our current chair and our former chair. They've been amazing partners, they've listened to me when I've had questions or suggestions, they've asked me questions, they've trusted me with that, and I appreciate both of them. But I also told them if they start blubbering, that we're going to be right back here tomorrow at 6 o'clock downstairs in the Skidco room for another meeting, and then we're all going to see each other Thursday at JFK for our Teacher of the Year ceremony, honoring Amy Santinella. So, yeah.
We're not, it's not over yet.
So I'm trying to, yeah. So I have to go about it this way, because that's just how it works for me. But yeah, I just want to thank everybody that I'm currently serving with, the various casting characters that have been here over the last eight years on our amazing show. We've had a lot of good times, ratings were up and down, but, but yeah, no, there was movie deals in the works that didn't quite pan out, but there are books in the way, I heard, and sometimes books becomes movies. Janet and Tina, I know you guys are readers, I wait for the film. I have to digest it in 90 minutes, I can't read a book. No, but thank you to everybody. I also want to specifically thank my PTO mom friends, because that's kind of how all of you met me. So, you know, Lauren started at Hazardville, I said, "What's a PTO?" I didn't even know what it was, to be honest. You know, bake sales, Mean Girls, those kind of movies. I didn't really know what a PTO was, and I just learned that basically it is a small, mighty group of four to six people who try to put on events for 300 students and parents and families to enjoy. And my greatest challenge, because the first year I was there, there was just me and three other moms, and two of them were second graders, so they were kind of getting ready to move up to Eli Whitney, which just left me and one other mom kind of running the PTO for a bit. And I recruited some of my best friends that I've ever had in the next few months. So we've watched our kids grow up together, they would all play with each other in the gym, or we had our meeting in the library, we looked out for each other, and that expanded through my relationships when I was a mentor at Parkman. That's how I got to know all the Parkman families, you know. Unfortunately, as parents, like, you only see this K-2 school, this 3-5 school, and then we all meet up at JFK, and we all see each other at the high school. I was fortunate enough to get to know other families by all the volunteering that I did, whether it was promoting an upcoming fundraiser or DJing the field days. And I thank all the PE teachers and all the principals that I've been friends with over the years that kept inviting me back and asking me to do it, and, oh, the kids, you have to be there, you're Station 10, you're always Station 10. So yeah, it was an honor, and I thank everybody for letting me do that. And I am going to be very involved with the schools. I'm going to help us with our school modernization, whatever that plan becomes a plan, I'm going to try to help everybody understand why it's important. If you don't understand why it's important, I want to help you understand why it's important. We'll do that through communications, through flyers, through photos, whatever we have to do, because we do need to fix that last piece of our educational facilities puzzle. We have a beautiful high school. We have an amazing middle school that's still only a couple of years old. I'll leave you with this. So my daughter's graduating on June 11th, 2026. The seniors graduating with her, this class of 2026 spent their middle school years, which are never fun for anyone. Middle school is tough. Your body's changing, your friend groups are changing. They dealt with the construction of JFK, which is why I said, "Listen, I'm going to have a daughter myself that's going to go through this." So it's okay if this passes, because they're all going to be safe, and they're going to break out the wings, and it's going to be beautiful, and it was. And then they got COVID thrown at them. So their middle schools were changing of bodies and friends, and changing of their building, and changing of the entire world as none of us knew it and what it became. So I obviously have a very personal reason to congratulate the class of 2026, when I'll be sitting there watching them graduate. And I just wanted to call that out in case some people out there didn't make that connection, that we got a really, really great crop of graduates coming up in a few months. And I, for one, can't wait to see that happen. So that is all. Thank you to everybody. Tina, thank you. Amanda, Dr. Jerry, I'm sorry I pulled you two into this over the years. Charlotte, thank you. Janet, thank you. We've always had conversations, and I appreciate that. Jean, I'll see you at the mall. From the desk of Scott Ryder, thank you, Gina Creay. Dean, it's been very good getting to know you. I enjoyed our slumber party a couple of weeks ago. And Phil, we do have some things in common. We have running, we have our love for our kids, you've seen me DJ at your son's school. Thank you, everybody out there in TV land. Thank you to everybody that came up and spoke. And if I was one of the names that came across your mouth this evening for a positive reason, I want to send that back to you as well. Thank you, guys, for everything you've done for me and my family. And we'll be back here tomorrow at 6 o'clock downstairs.
We'll be back here tomorrow at 6 o'clock downstairs.
It's not over yet.
Okay, so that's everybody, I think, okay. All right, so I just want to, Scott, just keep reminding, 6 o'clock tomorrow, because this is going to be a little tough. All right, so I want to first express my deepest empathies to the student's family that has passed. I hope that you are able to find some comfort soon. Echoing off of Phil and Janet, I wanted to thank everybody who went out to S. Nuntuck on last Friday for our Enfield Together Coalition Kickstart Meeting for Enfield Connects. They already kind of told you what it's all about, so I would just ask you, as one of the tri-chairs, to just reach out to your neighbors or somebody that you don't know, wave hi to your neighbors as they're driving down the street and you're walking the dog. We're trying to build togetherness, because there is a lot of people and students that feel socially isolated and lonely, and that's what we're trying to combat. And fun fact, apparently the first community in Connecticut to make this a whole, you know, a pull-wide initiative, so kudos to Enfield. I know student rep already said it, but Buzz Robotics hosting their revived STEAM Family Night on the 5th of November, 5 to 8 at Enfield High. Everybody is invited. Hope you get to make it out. I would be remiss to say that these past few weeks have been filled with a mix of emotions. I am overwhelmingly have a sense of gratitude for the opportunity to serve my community on the Board and the Council for a cumulative of seven years, especially this role as the Chair of the Board. But there's also a deep sadness to be leaving a place that literally has become a second home. And while I most certainly did not wish for, or want, or even ask for this chapter to close, it is what it is. I know that there are many, many other ways that I can continue to advocate for our students. So, this is going to be tough, man. Okay, but anyways, 6 o'clock tomorrow. Throughout my time, I have definitely witnessed the good with the bad, but most importantly, the incredible power of education. I've seen how it can transform lives, ignite passions, and shape futures. I want to take a moment to express my heartfelt appreciation to my fellow board members and the dedicated educators and staff who work tirelessly to ensure our students are safe, supported, and have the tools they need to succeed. Your commitment and passion have inspired me almost daily. Here comes the hard part. All right, get it together, here we go. Okay, I want to thank my parents, who every second and fourth Tuesday, watch us on YouTube. I know, it's exactly the riveting entertainment that they would like to watch on a Tuesday evening.
Very big ratings, I told you.
Great ratings we're getting. And they don't even live in Enfield, so we are definitely top-notch TV show here. They instilled in me the values of perseverance and the importance of education. They taught me that challenges are merely opportunities in disguise. Most importantly, I want to thank my husband and my children. Their unwavering support has guided me through very difficult times, and I'm forever grateful for their sacrifices, missed dinners, and events, and with all of that, still, their encouragement. And especially for going along with the "Mom wants to go camping again for the 15th consecutive weekend in a row," because, you know, disconnecting and forgetting my phone in the middle of the woods, or at the beach, for me at least, is the best prescription for relaxing. But the reason I'm here may drive my passion to make a difference in our tiny corner of the world. Obviously, this is not what I would consider smooth sailing. There were moments of intense frustration, disagreement, and even heartbreak. But through that, I learned invaluable lessons about leadership, resilience, and the importance of open communication. I think of the countless hours that we spend in meetings and discussions, brainstorming ideas to improve our schools, and navigating through solutions to problems. I also think of the laughter and the sense of pride that we share during celebrations of our students' great achievements, and each of these moments has left a mark on my heart permanently. So while I may be walking away from politics, I will always remain a passionate advocate for education and supporter of our students. I urge each of you to remember that our students are our future, and they deserve our best efforts every day. Thank you to some of you up here, some of you that have passed, some in the schools and some in the community for your friendship, laughter, and the memories. You know who you are, and I hope that those times can continue. I will always carry the lessons learned and the relationships built with me. I am extremely grateful to the citizens of Enfield that I was given this opportunity. I hope, I hope that I have lived up, why am I going to do this, to your expectations and the promises I made when I first took this role. I strive to be fair, non-political, and allow everyone their voice and opinions to be heard, and try to build consensus to advocate for students' needs, and make a positive impact during my time here. I wish you all the best. Just keep dreaming big and never give up. All right, Mom and Dad, I'm getting it together, we got to get back to your regularly scheduled television here. I cannot let the ratings drop, okay? Next item. Unfinished business, policy revisions, second reading Transportation Policy, number 3541. Ms. Kushman?
As mentioned, for the first reading, while the current policy number is maintained, the title and some of the text have been changed. The recommended updates align this policy with the proposed consolidation of our elementary schools, reduces the student walking distance to school buildings and bus stops, and establishes distance limit maps be reviewed annually and shared on the district website three weeks prior to the first day of school. I would like to make a motion to approve the second reading of Policy 3541, Transportation.
Motion moved. Motion made by Ms. Kushman, second by Ms. LeBlanc. Any discussion? Ms. Pickett?
I had lots of comments when we did this for the first reading. I'm not going to repeat any of those. I will share that I'm going to support this tonight so we can get a policy revision moving. I do think this is one that we should probably keep around for policy subcommittee, especially as we're moving kind of with our school modernization, and I think there's some other adjustments that we can make to make it a little more family-friendly and student-friendly. But thank you.
That's fair.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sikri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Gauss?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Ms. Kushman, 10B, repeal policies.
Having just approved the second reading of Policy 3541, the Policy Committee is recommending repealing five transportation-related policies in the 3,000 series. Policy 3541.7, Misbehavior on the School Bus, is now addressed in Policy 5131, Student Discipline. The content of Policy 3541.5, Transportation Complaints, and Policy 3545.2, Transportation of Private School Students Out of Town, are now contained within the revised Transportation Policy 3541. 3541.22, Safety Operability Responsibilities, and Policy 3541.6, Bus Drivers, contain great detail for the maintenance of the bus fleet and the qualifications and employment of bus drivers. Not only is this the responsibility of the bus company to address, not our super- Not only is this the responsibility of the bus company to address, not our superintendent, it is contained, the information is contained in the transportation contract our district currently has with Smith Bus. So I'd like to make a motion to repeal these policies.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Ms. Cushman, second by Mr. Kober. Any discussion? Okay, sensing, then roll call, please.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Ms. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Gauss?
Yes.
Mr. Kober?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right, 11 new business. We have none. Board of Committee reports. Ms. Akri, Curriculum Committee report?
The last meeting was held on October 23rd. There was a discussion about music program of study changes by Mr. Doobie and Ms. Middleton, but as of now, they have held off on any changes for further review. And also at the meeting, Ms. Middleton did give the data presentation that we saw tonight. So the next meeting is to be determined in the near future.
Okay. Mr. Kober, Finance and Budget?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Subcommittee on Finance and Budget has not met since my last full report provided at the last regular meeting. I do want to reiterate that we did cancel our November meeting due to Election Day. I did just want to publicly highlight two things, cut from our Superintendent's Weekly Update. Town auditors have sent preliminary notice that our FY '24 Educational Financial System Report has no findings. The district has performed procedures in the CSDE, Connecticut State Department of Education's, agreed upon Use Procedures Report, AUP, which we agreed to by CSDE in the town of Enfield. This brings us one step closer to having the town's FY '24 audit completed, which I know we briefly discussed as well. There was also a snippet on the federal funding update. CSDE provided an update regarding the status of federal funding from US Ed Department and USDA, US Department of Agriculture, considering the ongoing government shutdown. As of the update, CSDE continues to access all entitlement funds that have been awarded to Connecticut without interruption. September claims for the National School Lunch and School Breakfast Program meal reimbursements are currently being processed and are expected to be paid this current week. The next regular scheduled meeting of the Subcommittee is Monday, December 1st at 5:00 PM, which will be held at BOE Central Office, and that will conclude my report, pending any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kober. Ms. Cushman, Policy coming in.
Regarding, I know, Ms. Pickett, you had mentioned about the repeal of the policies from the Zero Series, and the reason that we chose not to do that the last time is that some of them did not have, were not part of another policy that we currently had yet. So to repeal them without having something already in place, we weren't willing to do yet. So we're going to wait till we have the new ones in place before we repeal those, much like we just did with the transportation. The Policy Committee will not be meeting in November, but our next meeting will be December 16th with the new seated board.
Thank you, Ms. Cushman. Leadership Committee, we don't have anything to report on. Liaison reports, school reports, and updates. Mr. Kober?
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We give my usual shout-out to the Henry Barnard friends and family. On Friday, October 24th, I was able to attend the Barnard-Crandall PTO's trunk-or-treat, which was held at Enfield High School. Besides the little chill in the air and some rain that had just passed through earlier, it was a successful evening of costumes, candy, and smiles. Last week, students in various Barnard classrooms completed field trips to their neighbors right down the road at Shaker Farms. Picture makeup day is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, the 29th. I do also want to highlight, as a general message, please take some time to review the November school calendar, as there are several days with no school, i.e. Election Day, Veterans' Day, Thanksgiving, and the Friday after, as well as two early release days for fall conferences, 11, 12, and 11:20 for the PK through 5. Please continue to monitor the Friday afternoon seminars and the Big Cat Courier newsletter which is sent via Parent Square. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Kober. Anybody else? Mr. Ryder?
Just Eli Whitney School, I just wanted to remind all of our families to be checking Parent Square, and if that's something that you haven't signed up for, as my graying, fellow graying buddy Walter mentioned, you can still go to enfieldpto.com for any of the school pages, and it'll tell you how to sign up for Parent Square. There's a link to the Enfield Public Schools website with the Parent Square instructions, so please make sure that you are on that. It's my final plea at the mic, just the more that you know about your child's school, the more invested that you're in, the more excited they get, and there's just so much going on in our buildings. Every building is its own little community, and this is how our administrators are communicating with the families. And it would just crush me if you weren't a part of the information and a part of the community, and a part of the information that's being shared. So, Parent Square, Parent Square, Parent Square. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Anybody else? Ms. Akri?
From the desk of Andrew DePere. Our annual Pinkout Day raised $4,050 to be donated to the American Cancer Society. This brings our three-year total to $12,624. Thank you to the entire Enfield community to help making this happen. The Prudence-Crandall Veterans' Day Assembly will be held on Monday, November 10. We are looking forward to honoring those who served. If any student wants to honor a special veteran, please complete the form that was sent home or contact the office. Our Costume Spirit Day will be held this Friday, October 31st. As a reminder, no masks or accessories, and the child must be able to get in and out of his costume independently. The Crandall Family Engagement Day will be held Tuesday, November 25th. Flyers will be coming home on Friday. Please RSVP and let us know you will be attending with your child. We have a few more days to donate to our food boat, thanks to some last-minute food and cash donations. We are very close to our goal in giving Mr. DePere a nice haircut for Thanksgiving.
I can't wait to see him go completely shaved head. That's going to be awesome. Even my daughter was like, "Let's, can I go back and watch that happen?" She was like...
Yeah, SafeGrad, their annual Jingle Jam is Friday, December 5th at the American Legion. Tickets are, what is it?
They just went on sale.
Yeah, they just went on sale. One for 25, two for 40, I believe. And doors open at 5:00, and the auction starts at 6:00.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Joint Facilities.
I don't have a next meeting date for that.
No.
But I'm no longer on it.
Right. I don't know. Joint Insurance Committee, there's nothing. Joint Security, the next one's until...
The next one's in December.
September sometime, yep. Pre-referendum committee.
Yep, we had our community conversation last Wednesday at JFK. We did have some attendees in person that asked some really great questions, and we had people online watching. That link is available to re-watch the meeting, and our next meeting is tomorrow night here at 6 o'clock.
No need to be sad. Coming right back.
I show a joint facilities for November 13th, for the record.
November 13th. Thank you, Mr. Macio.
Sorry, you're not going to be able to make it.
Thank you. Okay, all right. So, number 14, approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the regular Board of Ed meeting minutes, October 14th, 2025.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Pickett, second by Mr. Kober. Any discussion?
It was Dean.
Oh, it was, sorry. It was seconded by Mr. Gauss, my bad.
And Tina. And Tina was first.
She was, yeah. Didn't I say that?
I think you said Amanda. I think you said Pickett and Kober.
Sorry. We're good.
For those ladies.
Yes, Ms. Cushman.
One of the gals to my left.
Go for it.
So, on page four, number 12, under Board Committee Reports, with the Finance Committee in the second paragraph, it says, "The projected unexpected funds," is it meant to be unexpended? Okay, I just wanted to, okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, can I have a show of hands in favor?
Pending this type of...
Pending the, yeah. Nine in favor, none against.
(LAUGHING). They're still pending.
Mr. Kober, do we have any approval of accounts and payroll?
There are no action items for us, Madam Chair.
Mr. Ryder, do we have correspondence in Board Communications?
Nothing that was not previously included into our packet by Mrs. Lawler.
Okay. All right, so we have a need for executive session tonight for discussion regarding Enfield Teachers Association contract, and then we are going to have to come back out of executive session and make a vote. So you can stay tuned and listen to the wonderful whole music while you're waiting for us. So I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. LeBlanc, second by Mr. Gauss. Show of hands. Nine in favor and none against. So we will be back in a little bit. All right, we are back. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the Enfield Teachers Association contract as presented.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Ryder, second by Ms. LeBlanc. Any discussion? Mr. Kober?
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So just a couple quick public remarks I want to make on it. I know our current contract expires June 30th of this year, so people might be wondering why we're approving it now, since it doesn't take effect till July. This is actually based on a timetable we got from CSDE regarding negotiation dates, mediation dates, and arbitration dates. So the current contract we have went through negotiation, and it was tentative agreement was drafted in the mediation states. So that's as far as it went before we have the product we're working at tonight. While I was not on Negotiation Committee, I did review it. By and large, I think it's a fair contract. I'm glad to see that we added a clause for jury duty. I was surprised that we did not have one of that. I personally would have liked to see a cap on union business leave that was not incorporated, but nevertheless, that's not a deal-breaker. Regarding the general wage increase, I know personally I would have liked to see higher GWI increases for lower steps in order to promote retention for entry-level and mid-career teachers, rather than the current version, which has larger increases for the higher steps. Nonetheless, I think we had a good negotiating team and a very fair contract, and I look forward to supporting it.
Thank you, Mr. Kober. Anybody else? Mr. Ryder?
I just want to say that I think it is a very fair contract, and that as my last act as a Board member, I will be supporting it for our staff, who I can't thank enough for what they do for our students every day. Not everybody loves the school experience, but we have so many staff members and adults in our buildings that really go above and beyond for our kiddos, and also recognize those that maybe would rather be home gaming, but they look out for them, and I've always respected our staff, and I think it's a fair contract, and I'm happy to support it as my last act as a Board member on a Tuesday night.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Anybody else? Okay, so, roll call, please. Mr. Longing.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.